As much as I want to make a big deal about it.
Mics are on.
Not the wisest decision.
We're live.
The hour of 12 o'clock having arrived, the City Council of the City of Santa Cruz will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Golda. O'Hara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Present.
And Mayor Keeley.
Present. A quorum having been established, we will proceed. Any member have a statement of disqualification on closed session?
Thank you. Anyone have a disqualification on closed session? Seeing, hearing, none. Mr. Kandadi, let me ask you about the substantial need item that you brought to our attention via an email within the last little while.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Keeley, members of the City Council. I'm requesting that the council by motion add a subsequent need item to the closed session agenda. The subject is consideration of initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. The basis for the closed session is that the information that the council will be discussing in closed session came to my attention after the agenda was posted, and should the council decide to proceed with initiation of litigation, there's a need for action before your next regular meeting, which is February 25th. So I would request by motion that the council add that item.
Thank you, sir. Is our motion, Councilmember Golda, moved? Second by Councilmember Brunner. Is there debate or discussion? Anyone with us wish to comment on this? Seeing, hearing, none. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Golda.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley.
Aye. Motion is added accordingly. We are on the opportunity for anyone who's with us in chambers today or online who wishes to comment on our closed session agenda, to which we just added an item, this would be your opportunity to do so. Let me see if there's anyone with us in chambers. Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online?
We do not, no.
We do not. Based on that, we will be adjourning into closed session. Let me advise those who are wondering when we will come back. We will come back no earlier than 12:30. We could come back later. We stand adjourned into closed session.
Recording stopped.
Santa Cruz City Council has completed its work in closed session, and we are returned to open session, and the court would be kind enough to call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Golda.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Present.
And Mayor Keeley.
Present. A quorum having been established, we will move to oral communications. This would be the opportunity for anyone to address us on a matter under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. Good afternoon.
Hello, and thank you for doing all the hard work that you do. My name is Roland Seer. I was born three years after World War II in Germany, and I studied the history of Germany quite a bit, and I think that we can draw some parallels, there are some similarities. And what I'm concerned about now was best said by Pastor Niemerler, a Protestant, who famously said, "First they came for communists and socialists, and I didn't say anything. Then they came for union members, and I didn't say anything. Then they came for disabled people, and I didn't say anything. And they came for Jews, and I didn't say anything. And then they came for me, and there was nobody else left to speak up." Now, they come for transgender people. Now, they come for anybody who fits under the umbrella of DEI. Now, they come for regular government workers. Now, they come for immigrants, documented or undocumented. Where will be here? Where will be here in Santa Cruz? Will we be speaking up? I appeal to you to dig deep and do what's morally right. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir. Do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush?
We do.
What we're going to do is we have folks online and folks here, so we'll take the next person online, then we'll be with you, then a person online, and so on. So thank you for your forbearance. We'll take the first person online. Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Person online, good afternoon. Mr. Philip, they're going to have to take lessons from you on how to do this, apparently. Person online?
I'm trying to be online. I don't know if I am.
You're doing great. You've got two minutes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My name is Ken Reichman. I've been a resident of Santa Cruz for 55 years, and this is my first time I've spoken before the City Council. And I would just like to urge the City Council to reaffirm Santa Cruz's commitment to abide by the California Values Act, which I guess is the same thing as reaffirming Santa Cruz as a sanctuary city. And I'd also like to add that, to make sure this is not just a symbolic gesture, I urge the council to act on the recommendation of the Latino Affairs Commission for the city to provide financial support for legal aid, social services, and other emergency support for families traumatized by deportations. Thank you for this chance.
Well, thank you for joining. Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Yeah, hi.
Hi.
My name is David McCune. I've been in and out of Santa Cruz since 1963. I'm here today to tell you how adamantly opposed to gas-fueled leaf blowers I am. I live in a quadrant of about four apartment buildings at the bottom of, right, Blackburn. Almost forgot where I lived, Blackburn Street. And on a different day of the week, these maintenance crews will come, and they will crank these things up. And I live in a senior apartment complex. It's loud, it's obnoxious, I mean, they're air polluting. You can see the particles just flying through the air. The noise is just horrendous. And just to give you a little background, when I was 14, I pushed a broom for a living for a buck and a quarter an hour. And then when I was 16, I went out and swept the Alameda County Fairgrounds from midnight till eight in the morning for something like a buck seventy-five an hour. So, I mean, there's there are other ways to clean a place up other than these very annoying, obnoxious, intrusive devices. Please do something about it. All the people in my complex feel really strongly about getting rid of these things. I understand, I was at the county board supervisor meeting earlier this morning, as I understand that they had a proposal to eliminate them as of December 31st, and then they pushed it out because of the expense that these maintenance crews would have to deal with.
So much for being here.
Anyway, please get rid of these things.
On July 1st, they will. Our ordinance goes into effect on that date. Do we have anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dora. I've lived in Santa Cruz for the last six years, and I'm just here to comment on the homeless encampment sweeps that occurred recently in Santa Cruz. On Monday, the 27th, as you might know, the city, county, and CHP officers displaced homeless people camped on Crow Street, on Highway 1, on the levee, and the San Lorenzo Park. They destroyed their survival equipment, including any tents, tarp, sleeping bags, warm clothes, food, water, and medicine that they left behind. These sweeps happened in the middle of a stretch of nights that were so cold that the emergency winter shelter was open and full, and just a few days before the week of rain that we had. They also happened just three days before the point in time count that the CIN does, which, for those who aren't aware, is a visual census of homeless people in Santa Cruz. These sweeps were brutal, and they put so many people's lives at risk. Destroying people's survival equipment during some of the coldest, wettest days of the year, in what was clearly an attempt to force as many homeless people as possible to hide before the point in time count, is cruel and terrible. We all know that sweeping encampments doesn't make people any less homeless, it just traumatizes them physically and mentally, and sets back any progress they've made. Displacing homeless people is obviously ineffective, it's a waste of our money, and it is so cruel, especially when they have nowhere else to go. Our shelters are full. I'm just here to urge you to do anything in your power to take resources meant for these sweeps and put them towards literally any other kind of support for homeless people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council meeting.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
There we go.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Pauline Seals. First, I want to thank Mayor Keeley and City Manager Matt Huffaker for signing the November 7th Letter of Support for Immigrants that was also signed by 33 other countywide officials. It becomes increasingly clear that our strongest possible support is needed, and that grossly inhumane bullying needs to be averted with a display of moral strength. Our Latino population may have only a small number of people classified as undocumented, but in the current regime, otherwise will be included, others will be included as collateral arrests. I read that in the New York Times. And not just entire families, but entire neighborhoods will be negatively affected by ICE sweeps. We also have a huge number of Latino workers who drive in daily and are essential to construction, hospitality, healthcare, public works, and many other important aspects of our community. Workplace sweeps would seriously affect these. Therefore, please give the strongest possible support to our immigrant community, including reviewing and acting upon the recommendations of the Latino Affairs Commission for financial support. Help us resist the bullies. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone online, Ms. Bush?
No one with their hand raised.
Okay. Good afternoon, and welcome.
Hi, Mayor Keeley and Councilmembers, thank you. I'm Joanna Nelson. I'm a scientist working on climate solutions and a parent in Santa Cruz. And today, I'm following up with Ms. Seals' support for Santa Cruz's commitment to abide by the California Values Act and be a sanctuary city. I want to affirm-
What I'm going to do here, I wasn't entirely sure where Ms. Seals was going with that, but you've started. So oral communication is for items under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. So we will be to this pretty quickly, so you will have another opportunity to come up and speak to that item.
So consent items give us a time to speak?
We will get there, you bet.
Thank you very much.
We will get there. Thank you for your forbearance. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Always appreciate your way of making meetings happen properly and giving respect, and but still sticking to agenda, because that's what's got to happen. But appreciate my friends that were at the Board of Supervisors meeting today, and I understand that we do have to put a certain level of pressure upon my, I'm homeless in my homeless community, we do need pressure put upon us to guide us into the proper ass. Otherwise, non-cooperative. But we're at a point where I'm seeing just tremendous psychological pressure being put on people, and we're arranging rides to the hospital quite often for physical ailments, as well as helping people get 5150 or whatever they need. I just really wish that we would put a more comprehensive, human touch to things. People are suffering out there. They're human. They are on a continuum of life. They are not stuck in one place. They should not be judged as being stuck in that place. And I do have faith in everybody around here. I do. Let's make Santa Cruz do something cool, creative, show an example. I think we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Good afternoon. Welcome, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Philip.
Yes, sir. Okay, Peel Code 401 says, "Any person who deliberately aids, advises, encourages another to commit suicide is guilty of a felony. Any glorifying of an act of self-immolation on the BLM billboard, which is the source location of much needless controversy and angst and sinception, even allowing the continuation of its existence, now comes far too close to me to the intent of that code. I would offer a very realistic truth that with no BLM billboard, no self-immolation, attempted suicide, let's not ever see a repeat of that by removing the flame from the moth and deny any future permit granting extension of its existence. Some responsibility for the next jarring sad event then is on your inaction. Will Black Lives Matter less if a symbol of BLM worship is removed? Is it necessary? Has any point of it not been made? It's not an original idea, it's not art, not BLM property. The sum total of good versus upsetting events there cannot be said, unbalanced and now be positive. Those proclaiming martyrdom to those who attempt committing suicide is like jihadists proclaiming 28 virgins to those who blow themselves up in an act of terror. I personally view the BLM monument as a mix of lies, corruption, violence, and anarchy. Founded on the Ferguson lie of hands up, don't shoot, that never happened, the lie of police systemic racism, investigated for corruption, as in where did all the money go? Well, million-dollar mansions for the organizers for one. Violence as in burn and incite mass assaults by the useful idiots in every big city, and anarchy as in defund the police. We have here an ideology symbolized just outside where the devil doesn't need terrorists to do his work. I was here, I alone spoke against this symbol of violence and lies, and was first proposed in part because anyone who quotes Malcolm X, who was a slick Marxist who incited violent retribution as justice, is no Martin Luther King activist. If someone puts his hand on you, send him to the cemetery, is quotable, but it's not good advice in a civil society." Well, I'll skip the last sentence.
Anyone online, Ms. Bush? Okay. Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Considering that your microphone distorts the sound so badly, I'm just going to pass these out and let you read them yourself.
Give those to the clerk. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Anyone else under oral communication? Seeing, hearing, none. We are moving on to presiding officer announcements. I have none. Statement of disqualification. Any member have a disqualification on any of the items on our regular consent agenda? Seeing, hearing, none. City Attorney report on closed session. Mr. Kandadi, good afternoon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Keeley, members of the City Council. Prior to convening the closed session this afternoon, the council added one item of subsequent need, that is a consideration of initiation of litigation. In the closed session, the council received a report from and gave direction to the City Attorney's Office on one item of existing litigation, that is the matter of City of Santa Cruz versus Chevron Corporation et al. The council by motion approved an appeal of a decision by the San Francisco Superior Court granting a motion to quash by the Sitco Corporation. That appeal authorization was given in closed session. The second item of subsequent need, the council directed the City Attorney's Office to join in one item of existing litigation, and the parties and the particulars of that litigation will be available upon request by members of the public when the matter is, when the pleadings are filed. The basis for the subsequent need item was that the need for action came to the attention of my office after the posted agenda, after the agenda was posted, and there was a need to take action before the February 25th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. We are on, we're going to take a look at the calendar. Do you have any updates on that?
I have no updates to update.
For those of you with us who may be thinking about commenting on item 21, that has been on our agenda, that is continued to our next regular meeting two weeks from today. So item 21 continued for two weeks. We are on the consent agenda. For those of you that might be unfamiliar with it, we will be taking up items 3 through 15, inclusive, all on one motion. And what we will do is I will go around and see if council members have questions, comments, who would like to pull an item. Then we'll give members of the public an opportunity to comment on an item. If you are going to comment on multiple items, you still have three minutes for all of the items that you wish to comment on. Let me start with Councilmember Golda. Councilmember Golda, do you have an item you'd like to pull, comment, or question? Thank you. Councilmember O'Hara.
Nothing.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Briefly, yes. A comment on item 5, 9, 11, and 14, and I'll briefly state what those are. Item 5 is promoting resilient operations for transformative, effective, and cost-saving transportation, or the PTEC grant. Item 9 is the WARP Recovery Ad Hoc Committee. Item 11 is the sewer rehab notice of completion. Item 14 is West Cliff 900-1,000 block restriping. Just pulling these out to daylight for the community and thank the staff for their continued work on coastal resiliency.
Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick comment on item 9 and item 10. Item 9, I'm just very happy to see this as an item and look forward to working with my colleagues, Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson and Councilmember Golda, on the WARP Subcommittee as we explore options pertaining to the long-term resiliency of that cherished landmark. And on item 10, I just want to very quickly, just want to sing the praises of our Parks and Rec Department and HB Restoration, where their speedy work in painting the various site furnishings in downtown, such as lamp posts and railings on the planter's bed. It's great to see downtown covered in a fresh paint coat, and I'm very happy to support this item. So, thank you.
A paint coat?
Coat of paint.
There we go. I was pretty impressed, though. Thank you. Councilmember Brunner.
I had a quick comment on item 10. As was just stated, downtown recovery phase 5. So a thank you to HB Restoration, Inc., and our Parks and Rec Recreation Department for the massive undertaking of that project and the completion of that work. I've worked downtown for over 30 years, and it's the first time I've seen that happen. There were so many components to it, and it's made such a huge difference, so thank you.
Councilmember Trigaro, on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have a quick comment on item 6 that I'd like to share. After conferring with the city attorney, I just wanted to clarify that in that resolution, we reference ordinance number 2017-06, which was a 2017 ordinance. And I was asking the city attorney as to clarify whether, when the word agent is mentioned in that ordinance, if it includes the contractors used by the city, if in the legal interpretation, it would be considered to explicitly cover those. And he did confirm yes. Thank you.
Anyone with us wish to comment on the consent agenda? Please come forward. Mr. Philip, good afternoon, sir.
Hi again. As to the meeting minutes of item 3, in the last January 20th meeting, the video record of the meeting was altered. I refer to the middle of item 16, when the mayor called for a 10-minute break just before the video 216 timestamp. But then the recording jump cuts after the sound is cut, after the council filed out. Then at about 21612, the video snaps back to show all the council members ad hoc back at their seats to begin item 17. That 10-minute break and my, as usual, sage comments, as well as the council's deliberations and so forth, and the actual vote of the matter were deleted from the audiovisual record. I ask how this happened, that the council recordings were erased, all the Watergate tapes, and then do a full restoration of the meeting video record. As to item 4, the council's "let's not work any harder than we have to" item, I say, what a country. On item 12, "All attempts to siphon money from the water fund," probably because it's sitting on huge piles of yet unused borrowed money by the Water System Upgrade Ordinance into other money buckets used for purposes other than delivery of water, obfuscates transparent accounting. I also suspect it then requires actually a resolution, not an accounting adjustment, to be municide legal. In item 6, which for no really good reason reaffirms the council's approval of SB 54 or the California Values Act, it's minusly out of step, clueless out of step with current events. When it passed, the invasion of illegals into California was quite low under Trump's 2017 border policies, but then the far-left enjoyed a perverse brief stint at destroying American values of national sovereignty, toying instead with globalist totalitarian fantasies of global world order where borders don't exist. Certainly, the situation's regards to lunacy of that idea of a beneficial natural invasion by illegal aliens has worsened beyond previous imagination under the Biden administration, and by who knows who was running the country even, allowing 10, perhaps 15 million unvetted illegals, including unknown numbers of criminals, including rapists, terrorists, and mostly costly mooching freeloaders into our country at the backpicking expense of our more legitimately deserving citizens. All new jobs have gone to foreigners since 2019. I don't have that much time left. I will say for everybody that is kind of worried about this, read the ICE website, and they describe who it is they're looking for. And it's a lot of people, but people who have been here before, the Biden administration, there a long time, don't have criminal record, don't get caught committing a crime, they're not really looking for you, okay? Go read it, you know? I have here what they are looking for, but I'd have to find it, I don't know. But I have a lot of stuff to say, obviously, we're not going to get to that. I would note that all the crimes that are committed by illegals are preventable crimes, you know, and-
Mr. Philip, what you can do is if you'd like to hand your letter, that's fine, we'll put it in the record. Don't want people to not have the opportunity to express their view. Anyone else? Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Keeley and Councilmembers, and speaking in support of consent item 6, abiding by the California Values Act in solidarity with multiple immigrant communities. And it's important to me that there are efforts, I'd like to learn about them, to work with other sanctuary cities for strategy in response to the federal government threatening to or pulling federal money for cities that are sanctuary cities. Thank you very much. And I'll add, while I'm up here, consent item number 9 and number 14, yeah, thank you for focus on coastal resilience and all the good work there.
Thank you so much. Anyone else with us in chambers wish to comment on the consent agenda? Do we have anyone else? Ms. Bush, you asked for an opportunity to respond on the question of minutes that was raised.
Yes, specifically the the recording. We're having a trickle of the meeting, since fixed a recording, so it is complete now.
Thank you for that. Thank you. On the consent agenda on item 6, I want to thank my colleagues or the council members who brought this forward. It's a very serious and thoughtful piece on a very serious topic. My sense of this is that the federal government doesn't have a legal right- My sense of this is that the federal government doesn't have a legal right to federalize our local police and they don't have the legal right to impose their priorities on us. As I understand it, they have their priorities and we can and do reserve the right to have our own priorities. As I understand it, the law on this is that the city of Santa Cruz and setting its priorities and the federal government and setting their priorities, where those align, that's just fine. Where they don't align, our priorities that in the city are going to guide our policy. This is an area, it seems to me, where we do not align our policies with the federal government. My understanding, what we can't do is obstruct. That is a very different concept than we set our own priorities and we follow them. And I think that this resolution is a very thoughtful piece of work that recognizes our independence as a local government. And again, I want to thank all three of the members who brought this forward and the clerk will call the roll.
All moves consent.
On the consent agenda, and second on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Golda.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Keely.
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on item 16. Item 16 is the Children's Fund Oversight Committee. We will receive a report here. Ms. Bush will walk us through a process on this. Ms. Bush, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one position to fill a vacancy on the Children's Fund Committee. We continued it from the last meeting. It's an at-large position with a term ending January 31st, 2026. And we could start with Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson, or if anyone has a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Andrew Cunningham with Boys and Girls Club.
I just wanted to second that.
Any other, any new nominees aside from Andrew? All right, so by consensus, Andrew Cunningham is appointed.
Item, excuse me, item 17 is approval of Councilmember Trigaro, Brunner, and O'Hara's nominations to the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. Ms. Bush.
Thank you again, Mayor. These are directly appointed positions to the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women. There are four openings and we have Councilmember Trigaro, Brunner, O'Hara, and Golda having appointments. So we will start with Councilmember Trigaro.
I'm appointing Courtney Barrett.
Councilmember Brunner.
Danielle Long for reappointment.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Laura Noble.
And Councilmember Golda. By consensus, we'll have
By consensus.
So we have Courtney Barrett, Danielle Long, Laura Noble, and Anissa Novak.
Thank you very much. We are on item 18. This is the fiscal year 2025 Adjustments and Information on the Status of the City's Budget and Financial Condition. We have the Director of the Department of Finance, Ms. Cavill. Ms. Cavill, thank you for your good work and the good work of your department. Very complicated work that you folks do and you do it so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Cavill, Finance Director, and I'm here with other staff to present our mid-year update, which includes some updates on the general fund, revenue trends, personnel, and but the budget adjustment for fiscal year '25. So as it's coming up, what I wanted to sort of start with is looking back at the past couple of years. Some of this I did last meeting when we talked about the ACFA and the PAFRA, but in particular, looking at the general fund for 23 through 25. So 23 and 24, those are the actual numbers that we ended the years with and just sort of pointing out that we did end basically balanced budget for both of those. We had small deficits, but in the big scheme of 150 million, pretty good. I did want to just address too, between 23 and 24, there's a big jump in both revenue and expenditures, but I wanted to mention that that really is an accounting adjustment. We changed the way that we do our cost allocation, so that resulted in that looking like there was an increase in both, but basically it's, like I said, an increase in both the revenue and the expenditure side of the world. And then in '25, we did adopt a balanced budget of about 150 million. So far, we're tracking on that. As we would expect, we're, you know, a little bit over 50% through with the year and that's about where we are, a little bit above 50% in both revenue and expenditures. One thing to note on the revenue side, we do have two state grants that are one-time funding that are reflected in these numbers for a total of about $6 million. One grant for $2 million, another one for $4 million. In general, revenues are coming in as expected. Sales tax is a little bit low, but that's statewide, that's not unique to us. So we're hoping that as we get through spring break and get into the summer, that will pick up. Looking specifically at some tax, our top four tax revenues, you can see we just basically, we have steady growth in all of them, property tax, TOT, utility user tax. There is a big jump in the sales tax there, which is represented by the new sales tax increase that went into effect in '25. So that's the big, the huge increase there, so that's reflected. This is the first, we have that for the whole fiscal year, started July 1st, so that will be reflected in all of our fiscal year '25. And then the other topic that we do talk about, I try and bring up as often as I can, is our status of our reserves. So the red line that's here represents our goal. We really want to have two months' operating reserves and we want that, our goal is to have unrestricted reserves. So what's reflected here in the green and the blue bars are what is our unrestricted reserves, that's our emergency and our operating reserve. The purple is our pension reserve. That is restricted and can only be used for pension costs. So rather than having it as a stacked bar and kind of have it over there on the side to reflect the fact that we have it, but it's not an unrestricted reserve and it doesn't really help us reach that two-month goal that is what we're shooting for. So I'd like to bring up Emily Burton to talk a little bit about the budget adjustment highlights for fiscal year '25.
Ms. Burton, good afternoon and welcome and thank you for your good work in the department.
Yes, thank you and thank you for having me here today. Again, Emily Burton, I'm Management Analyst in the Finance Office. What we have for you on the slide is breaking down the many pages of budget adjustments that we provided to you. The top two are about our revenues, which is essentially the biggest change you see in the budget adjustments is in the CIP revenues. We have about $6.4 million of adjustments and that's mainly accounting for unbudgeted grant funds that are coming in for CIP projects, as well as transfers in from different funds into our CIP projects. The general fund is seeing about a $1 million increase in revenues and that's partially due to fee and license increases, as well as some unaccounted-for revenues when the budget was adopted. And then we have the last two bullets about expenditures. You see CIP expenditures being increased in alignment with the grant fund revenues to balance those out and keep our projects balanced. And then the two new funds that are being created to help our tracking of state funds for transportation development. And then you also see the budgeting of our carbon fund awards, which was about $30,000 within the city.
Ms. Delion, good to see you, welcome.
Appreciate it. Apologies for the overage there of the text. The major position changes in the budgets, I'll just speak to you about it if it's challenging to read. Our nine position adds total, there is some benefit in bringing them all to mid-year. They're in the service areas of administrative services, that's clerical, analytical, as well as financial, resiliency and sustainability. We have a lot of grants being managed under the City Manager's Office. One project I make of note is the Living Shorelines feasibility project. This position would be critical in supporting not only that project, but many grants associated in that area. We also in our Parks and Recreation Department have an open space request for a field supervisor, a critical piece of work that the department has been working on for the last year, so we're looking forward to start that earlier than expected. And as well as two other positions in water treatment and engineering. Again, all of these, while it might be unusual to add during mid-year, we have some benefits in these service areas to get the recruitment started faster and then reassess where we are in that recruitment once the larger budget comes up for fiscal year '26.
Thank you, Ms. Delion. Ms. Cavill.
For the tag team. So one thing I wanted to sort of look at fiscal year '26 and beyond. So this is our projections that we have now. As you can see, again, we kind of, we came in, you know, right about budget. We are proposing, we will propose a balanced budget for fiscal year '26. In '27, we do have a drop as we're projecting a drop as we bring back some of these transfers that we've been holding off on. We've held off on the CIP transfer, the economic development transfer. We're bringing those back in '26 and then '27 and beyond, but that's why you see that dip there. And then as things start to stabilize a little bit, the increase in revenue and the kind of going back into the black there is really reflective of some hotels that are going to be coming online, so we've got increased revenue that we're projecting there as we go through. So that's basically what we're looking at in kind of right now, our projections for '26 and beyond.
And then just to lay out some of the highlights of the budget calendar remaining for fiscal year 2026, we are having development or departments working hard developing their budgets, their operating budgets and their CIP budgets throughout the end of this month. And then we have commissions that we'll be looking at draft versions of the budget, as well as the finance, HR, and City Manager's Office are going to be meeting one-on-one with the different council members and the mayor to go over some highlights of what the fiscal year 2026 budget looks like. And then we will propose that budget and post it on the website and have the budget hearings in late May and followed by budget adoption in June. And so we have on this slide, the recommendation today, which is to accept the revenue and expenditure budget adjustments that are listed there in your report, as well as to authorize a city manager to make allocations and appropriations within those budgets and to receive the update that you just received, as well as make the changes that Sarah Delion highlighted about the personnel and compensation plan. Thank you, and we are here for any questions.
Councilmembers' questions and comments on this item? Councilmember Golda.
Budget so digestible. I know some of us love budgets up here. The mayor, maybe myself, maybe not everybody, but I do think for laypeople, this is really digestible and great to bring it to us. My one question is around the TOT tax and I know I had brought this up once before, but like the La Quinta that came online was being used as dorm rooms for the university and then we weren't getting TOT for that. Is there a way that we're making sure as new hotel rooms come online, they're not being rented for 30-day plus for the university or for housing? Not that that's not important, but just we rely on the tax.
Right. So, so yes, if they're, we're making sure that if it's a rental that's less than 30 days, that we're getting the TOT. If it's more than that, then it, we're looking at if there's any sort of agreement to make sure that we don't lose TOT. So, so we are checking that as hotels come online. If they, if they go into an agreement, now if they, if we don't have an agreement, it's up to our audit, so we will audit them to see if they are exceeding that 30-day mark and if it's because of the university or how that's working. So we handle that through our audit division.
Wait, would they be penalized if they did that in some way or no? They still, they just don't pay the TOT tax, right?
If they, if, yeah, if they're there for 30 days, 30 days or more, they're not subject to TOT. Usually when we've gone into agreements, when hotels have done that, there's been an agreement that the university will compensate us for that loss of revenue, but if we don't have an agreement and we find it out sort of after the fact, then it's, then we need to go back in and try and recover that. But, but usually it's, it's been in advance. We, the university will, will help us do that.
Well then, to the extent possible, keep up the good work. Thank you.
For the questions and comments on the item? Seen, hearing none. Is there anyone with us who wishes to make comment on the mid-year budget report and adjustments? Seen, hearing none. Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online wishes to comment on this?
No, they're hand raised, no.
Thank you. Seen, hearing none. The matter is back before the body for a motion. Councilmember O'Hara.
Move staff recommendation.
Councilmember Trigaro seconds. The motion is their debate or discussion. Seen and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Golda.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
And Mayor Keely.
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on item 19. A Comprehensive Wildfire Preparedness and Safety Program. This is brought to us by three members of the city council. And who would, Ms. O'Hara, open on this? Councilmember, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to first start with appreciation for Councilmember Trigaro and Councilmember Golda joining along with me on this item. And of course, we have our fire chief and our fire marshal, but I know you have a different role as well, here as well. About three or four weeks ago, I was emailed by Erica, our PIO, asking if I would like to write the mayor's message in the Sentinel as a brand-new council member. It happened, that email happened to arrive while I was watching the news unfold in Southern California. It was not a hard decision to think about this particular policy as something that this city should very much focus on. With our recent reigns, it's kind of human nature, we feel more complacent around these kind of preparedness and safety endeavors, but I would say when we are not in an emergency is when we should be working really hard on these things. And so I would like to turn it over to the fire chief, who is going to provide the community a brief overview of our current efforts around wildfire preparedness. We do an exceptional job and we have for many, many years. And we know that our climate is changing, our conditions are changing, our all-hazards approach to reacting to emergencies and urgent situations is comprehensive, but this particular issue is top of mind for me. So I will push, push the microphone over to our fire chief, who's going to provide a bit of a presentation.
Chief, good afternoon and welcome. As we always say, when you are here, please take back to the women and men in the fire department, our thanks and appreciation.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. Again, Rob Odie, Fire Chief. Again, thank you, Councilmember O'Hara, for the opportunity to draw the attention to this important issue. You know, wildfire season, as we have learned over the past couple of years, is not just a season, but it's year-round. And so it's important, no matter what time of year, to make sure that we are focused on wildfire preparedness. And so today, we just want to take a moment of your time to sort of address not only the preparedness aspect, but focus on what our risk is as a community, talk about some of the actions that we are taking as a city, as a fire department, some of the plans that we have that are forthcoming. And then, of course, the call to action that we have for the community, that we really are hoping that this, this moment here that we're in front of you will sort of inspire many of the community members to sort of do their part in terms of being prepared. And so what I will do first in terms of understanding the risk is call our OES manager, Meredith Albert, up to sort of discuss with you guys what our immediate and long-term risks are. So it's sort of some of the tools that we have available to us and then we will go from there and talk about what actions the fire department is taking. So I'll introduce Meredith Albert.
Ms. Albert, good afternoon and welcome again.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Suzy, for bringing this up. This is a topic that's also near and dear to my heart. When we look at this list of potential impacts, what we're looking at from a programmatic perspective is what we can do to mitigate each of these. So reducing the impacts based on the likelihood of loss of life, impacts to property and the environment. There's the very short-term things that we've seen in Southern California and in Northern California in 2017, and then there are longer-term things. California in 2017, and then, there are longer-term things, and these are all areas that we're going to try and address holistically through our programmatic efforts. Susie, Councilmember O'Hara touched on an all-hazards approach. The benefit of the way we have been planning and continue to plan is that even planning for other types of disasters, tsunamis, earthquakes, landslides, flooding, also benefit wildfire preparedness. So, a lot of the things that we can do to mitigate one type of disaster also mitigate the impacts of others. I'm thinking specifically about increasing registrations for our emergency alert and notification system, which is an all-hazard system. So, when we assess risk, when we look at risk mitigation and assessment, we pull from a number of different analyses, federal, local, state analyses. These are the types of hazard assessment tools that inform the way we approach an understanding of our risk. And what you'll see in these three different maps, the upper right is the National Risk Index map, based on census tract, the lower left is fire hazard severity map, and the lower right is a CAL hazards, CAL OES map. What you'll see is that while our immediate wildfire threat in the city of Santa Cruz isn't as severe as other parts of the county, we are surrounded by areas that are at higher risk. And we know that disasters don't fall neatly within jurisdictional boundaries and that the impacts are likely to touch our community, even if we aren't touched by wildfire. So, this, assessing these different sources of information on risk is how we inform our entire programmatic perspective. So, when we look at the five to 10 different types of natural hazards likely to impact the community, these are the tools we turn to, to gauge what parts of our population and what parts of our landscape are likely to be impacted. With that in mind, I have a summary of what we have been doing and what we plan to continue doing. And again, thanks to Councilmember O'Hara for bringing in the community engagement piece and putting that front and center, because ultimately, our approach to wildfire preparedness and mitigation depends on a collective response. We can write all the plans in the world, and they can be the most beautiful plans you've ever seen, but if we don't have community buy-in and a collaborative, collaborative approach, if we don't have community members registered to receive the emergency alerts, those plans mean nothing. So, really, again, appreciate bringing this front and center, and also want to emphasize that we are focusing hazard mitigation, wildfire resiliency, and emergency operations planning. These are three areas that represent coordinated interdepartmental efforts to really improve our ability to withstand and build back in the likelihood that we have a disaster. And I just want to level set for a second. This is a really unpopular and challenging thing to say, but we will experience disaster, right? We know it's going to happen. And when we talk about mitigating impacts, we're just talking about preparing our community and our city staff and our city infrastructure to rebuild and recover with the least amount of pain, the least amount of money, and to bring our community back to something close to wholeness, recognizing that those communities that are touched by disasters are never completely the same. The final item on this list, the wildfire preparedness report, is something that Councilmember O'Hara brought to our attention, and it really represents, I think, one of the most important elements of this type of planning, which is to make our plans, which are heavily rooted in regulatory compliance and these systems that are set up by FEMA and the state, to make them accessible, to be able to communicate what we're doing and why, and to bring in the community as part of that planning process. And until we have these types of reports available, the other stuff is kind of less, less relevant in my mind. So, I'm going to turn this over to Fire Marshal Shields to talk about the interdepartmental effort we're making on wildfire resiliency planning.
Marshal Fields, good afternoon, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. So, Tim Shields, Division Chief of Prevention and Fire Marshal for the Fire Department. Thank you, Chief. He told me that I wasn't going to have to speak today. Now, I'm all discombobulated. So, I want to talk a little bit about the wildfire resiliency plan that we are putting in place or developing as we speak. This has been an effort, goes back to CZU, really, and I'll, I'll give you a quick little background of, during CZU, we weren't sure what we needed to protect in terms, in terms of critical infrastructure. And so, we had all the great minds up at the EOC, it was determined of, you know, these are the critical water facilities that we need to make sure are resilient immediately, which means we're going to do a lot of immediate vegetation management around those facilities. From that, former Chief Haiduk and then Chief Odie have really looked forward to implementing a plan that would protect all of our critical infrastructure, not only in the city but the county, because the city does own and operate a lot of property in the county. In addition, we are looking at all the wildland-urban interface areas in the city as well, which, you know, we're ringed by wildland-urban interface all around the city, and so, we developed this plan to really attack both critical infrastructure and then the interface. So, it's a collaborative effort between Parks Department, Water Department, Public Works Department, and Fire Department, where we were able to identify all of the critical areas that we needed to address for wildfire mitigation. We were able to use some grant funding through CAL FIRE to accomplish a majority of the process we see here on the screen, and so, that in turn led us to hiring a contractor, an expert, an arborist, to lead the process and develop the plan. And as you can see right now, we're right in the middle of the project with anticipated completion date of the 1st of July, so fiscal year 26, day one, we should have something in place that we'll come back to council and present to you. And this is just an example of what the contractor has already envisioned in terms of some veg management within the POGA. Historically, we looked at veg management, and we really looked at shaded fuel breaks along, you know, roads, pathways. This is a more holistic approach, where we're looking at the entirety, entirety of POGA, of how do we manage it, not only for wildfire resilience, but forest health. And they're looking at connect, connectivity through the open spaces. It's not just cutting right on the edges, it's thinning out through the heavy vegetation itself to minimize the transfer of fire where it starts to where it wants to go. So, this is a bigger-picture look at wildfire resiliency than just the fire breaks that, you know, are helpful, but this is a bigger, broader look at it. And again, we're not just looking at wildland-urban interfaces, we're also looking at our critical infrastructure. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
So, those are just some of the efforts we've been undertaking over the last, actually, the last year, and again, wanted to raise awareness to what the risks are locally. And then, of course, like I mentioned earlier, it's the call to action and what the community's role is in terms of preparation. And one of the things that we have found through some of our district engagement and through just taking a deep dive into Cruisaware registrations, is that there are a number of districts and just a city as a whole, some of our registration numbers are critically low. So, as the fire chief and just a community member, I'm, I'm just imploring the community as a whole and all of us as leaders to really get the community to log in and register. We have the QR code here. We also have information in our fire administration, it's on our website. People can go to Cruisaware, they can do a search for cruisaware.org, and they can register. And again, we talk to people, it's not about registering just your home, you can register where you work, where your loved ones, loved ones work, where they go to school, because if there's ever an emergency, a school lockdown, or an event at your spouse or partner's place of work, you can get notifications at those locations. And so, what I have found, when we've talked to people at these district engagements, that really sort of piques people's interest. So, again, it's, it's a really useful tool to really communicate with folks is what's going on in the county and to those places that are really important to us all. So, again, register for these alerts to be aware and also have a go-bag, you know, be ready to go. I think one of the things that was popular in my house during the fires was being asked, what would you take if you had two minutes, five minutes? You know, have those conversations, have a plan, have a communication plan. If you guys are apart, where would you meet? Who would you call that doesn't live in the area to make sure you guys can all check in? These are all things that we have on our preparedness flyer that we prepared at the Fire Department, again, that's available on our website or in our fire admin. So, again, we implore everybody to become educated, to become prepared, and we have more information on our website. So, with that, I'll take.
And this is a big push in our district engagements that we have, is really, we have sign-ups there, so when community members come, the district engagements, council members, it's, hey, you can sign up right here now and be part of Cruisaware.
So, with that, I'll take any questions or any comments you guys might have.
Questions by members, comments by members? Vice Mayor's recognized.
Thank you. Thank you to my council colleagues and the Fire Department for bringing this important item. A couple of questions. When you say district engagement, what, what is, what is meant by that, and what does it look like?
The events that we were invited to as individual departments?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were, yeah. I didn't know if it was something different than what, than what the council members put on, okay.
My apologies. And then, we, we do some of our own department events, like our open house and some other events where we try and have flyers and other information.
I know you partner with Firewise groups and do those events either, so I just wasn't sure if they were distinct. This is maybe, I don't know who it's a question for, maybe for our city manager, but I know that the county is standing up their Measure Q advisory body. Where is there potential for partnership as we develop this wildfire preparedness plan? Can we ensure that there isn't duplication? So, how are we aligning these efforts with the county Measure Q advisory body?
I thank you for that question, Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson. We are actually in the process right now of drafting an expenditure plan for use of the Measure Q funding that we receive as a direct allocation. It's roughly around $600,000 a year is what's being forecasted, and as part of that work, we certainly want to leverage that with our other agency partners as well. That'll eventually come before the council for review sometime in the next, the next few months, and then, we'll come forward to the Measure Q Oversight Committee as well. In addition to that work, there are also competitive buckets of funding under Measure Q that we can also apply for when it comes to vegetation management, regional coordination as well, so I do think there will be opportunities for us to leverage that as that new measure comes online over the course of the next year.
That's great to hear. I think just my last maybe question for now is, what, what is the projected timeline for the development of this plan?
Well, we'll have a draft by the end of the month.
Okay. And so, maybe this is a question for my council colleagues. What, my understanding in reading the agenda report was that the ad hoc committee would help the support of the development of this plan and do community outreach engagement. What do you all anticipate the timeline for the ad hoc committee, given that the plan is projected to be completed in a month?
Yeah, and the rapid fire development of the plan was not necessarily what I was expecting. I really very much appreciate that, and I think having something to work off of that particularly looks at the existing risks, outlines those priorities, and also outlines potential opportunities for investment is what we would like to have that conversation with the community about. In terms of the timing, I would expect that we would, I would yield to the city manager and the city attorney that we could potentially even just appoint the ad hoc committee today, I think, that might make sense. What I think I have learned over the last four weeks, three or four weeks, working with the Fire Department and particularly Meredith, and, and her focus on an all-hazards approach, is that to catalyze the community into this discussion is the most important piece of this. A report is incredibly important as it relates to some of the stuff that Tim Shields was talking about. There will be a requirement of investments, particularly in our open spaces. We have the good and wonderful benefit of having a tremendous amount of open space around our community that we use and we love, but it also, you know, has, is an opportunity for additional risk to the city. So, what I want to share is that, you know, I think my envision is probably a six-month process where we're engaging with the community on this. I think your point about other, you know, example, Measure Q, what we are hoping to do is develop a stakeholder group of all of those different agencies and partners that have that overlap, and some of the things that have come up, at least in my mind, that evacuation planning, we've done a tremendous amount of work. As somebody who lives at the upper, upper, you know, east side of campus and has not been able to take my kid to school during protests the last two years for over a week, not being able to leave campus, you know, questions of evacuation are top of mind for me, and I think it's going to be important for us to have that conversation. I know that's true for the Prospect Heights neighborhood as well, and there's a lot of concerns about fuel load with the, with the trees up there. So, that's a very long-winded way of answering your question, but yeah, about six months.
Thank you.
For the questions or comments? Councilmember Brunner, then Councilmember Trigaro. Councilmember Brunner, you have the floor.
Thank you. I guess just a quick clarifying question. The wildfire preparedness plan that has been worked on and has been presented in phases to the Public Safety Committee, which I sit on, and so, can you just kind of clarify the difference between, there's, part of the, the direction is to initiate a comprehensive wildfire preparedness safety program. Is that different from the plan? What is the program and what's different there?
Can you speak to that? So, I think, I think to the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember O'Hara, but I think the original intention of this program is to provide an avenue for community input into our wildfire preparedness efforts, which is needed. As far as outlining the risk and mitigation efforts, we, we have that science, we have that built into community wildfire resiliency planning, we have it in the local hazard mitigation plan. That is an work that we need to do, which is why I have, I'm ready to present a document summarizing our current risk and our current mitigation strategies that have been informed by council and by the Public Safety Commission to date. The part that we really need collaboration with in terms of a program is community outreach and engagement. Does that answer your question?
It does. It's all, it's all great, and it also sounds duplicative of working with current work with the Firewise groups and other neighborhood groups and the open houses, so it's just kind of formalizing it maybe and, and emphasizing that.
Sure, and I, you know, I'll acknowledge that it felt duplicative to me at first as well. I think if we are going to be duplicative on any type of effort, this is a worthy one. The wildfire preparedness plan is a largely community-driven initiative, it's affiliated with the Fire Safe Council Groups. The wildfire resiliency plan is a collaborative interdepartmental initiative, and the missing piece here is really the communication with the public and the engagement in our city efforts so that people know what we're spending money on, why, where, what our competing interests are, and how we can build our collaborative resilience more. So, there are elements that maybe are duplicative, and we'll figure those out. I think we're very early in the planning process, but there is a role for this program, and I think it could potentially turn into a model for community engagement with respect to our other hazards.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Councilmember O'Hara for her leadership in bringing this together, and Chief Odie, and all of, of your work to bring this. And I also want to especially highlight Ms. Albert's point, because I've been very thankful in this collaboration to glean quite a bit from her work through the lens of equity, her concern for vulnerable communities, members, including our senior citizens and residents that have limited mobility, that we are truly trying to plan for what we don't know, and I have a lot of faith in our city staff that they are prepared for the unknown, but our community members are not. And so, I just want to end my comments with reiterating the call to action. My district members have a low engagement in the Cruisaware system, I found out through this process, and so, I want my district members, as well as all community members, to participate in. in both Cruz aware and the Firewise groups that, when possible. It's about the preparation, but also the resilience afterwards that we'll be looking for community engagement. And I've been very thankful for the leadership of Laura Lee Martin in the Firewise group in my area, and they need more, they need more participants. And so I just want to, yeah, end my comments with that call to action. Thank you.
Questions or comments by members? This will be the opportunity, you're completed with your presentation, thank you very much, all of you. This will be the opportunity for any members of the public who would like to comment on this item to do so. Mr. Ewing, good afternoon, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. My name is James Ewing Whitman. I guess I have a Boris Johnson haircut today or something. I took some notes on this. I wasn't, I want to kind of somewhat respect boundaries and just talk about what was being talked about, but the recent LA fires and the CZU fire was mentioned. It seems like how can you really prevent situations like this? You know, I could blame the RAND Corporation, founded in 1948. You know, CNN did an amazing presentation in 1985 on lightning as military weapons and 60 gigahertz as a military weapon. So I'm absolutely calling the CZU fires, directed energy weapons fires, and LA fires. I mean, there's an excellent two and a half hour presentation done by Jamie Lee. It's on my YouTube account under James Ewing, number 58. The title is Paradise Lost 51: The Fire Embers Are Programmable Swarming Nanobots. Manny's interviewing was recruited out of high school over 50 years to start working on this technology. This stuff is nothing new. So what can we do to prevent it? People might want to educate themselves in areas a little bit more broad than the fake stream media and the general information that's available at our control universities such as UCSC and Cabrillo. I know, I'm a full-time student again at Cabrillo. So, you know, there's a lot of information. I was personally on the beach when that fire started in Santa Cruz in August of 2020, and I personally took pictures of the property I used to live at on Started Road off of Alba. Main house was turned into foundry dust, as was the second story accessory dwelling that I had. Some neighbors saved their homes because they had ponds and stuff, and I guess they were lucky. But that property had over 250 fruit trees on it and several large redwoods and a lot of Douglas fir. None of those trees were burned to any other extent than their root systems were burned. I have extensive pictures on this that I took. So the LA fires, I mean, what are we really going to do? How can we really prepare ourselves for what's going on? I mean, I am taking a, oh, I thought it was a certification in hazardous materials. It seems like it's an intro. So as much battling I have with the professor, he seems to like what I've written so far. So having that three-day go-bag, having one or two fire extinguishers in your vehicle, water, just being prepared, you know, you can play all these things and pretend that something's happened. How are you going to react? And as with anything, if you practice, you're better prepared to deal with when it happens again, because certainly it's not done. Thank you.
Anyone online, Ms. Bush?
No one with their hand raised.
With their hand. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Ann Robb. I'm a community member. I live on the edge of the Arroyo Seco Canyon. And so about 20 years ago, I organized a community neighborhood effort to actually bring the goats in and graze down that canyon because it's pretty overgrown and there's a lot of hazards in that. The city owns the property adjacent to mine. So I'm really glad this is happening. I'm here today to, you know, be part of this and be on the ground floor of anything like that. I am going to, now I learned about Firewise just last month, so I've reached out to the neighbors to get a Firewise group in our area and do it. And I just, one thing I wanted to request of the city is that we can work together with the city, Arboris, for example, with PG&E, with the, hopefully this group or the ad hoc committee will have the power to get everybody to the table and allow for perhaps removal of hazardous trees, even though they've been there more than 20 years. So I look forward to working together and hope that we can, you know, make it affordable and possible to actually do the hazard reduction, because it has to start in the neighborhoods. The additional challenge in our neighborhood is there's a lot of rental properties, so it's hard to sometimes get traction with those properties. But anyway, I hope we can do that, and you have the support of people like myself that are, you know, last time people cooked, you know, opened their pockets to bring the goats there and, you know, but you have to do it every year. You got to keep up on it. It can't be a one-time thing. So hopefully we can have a sustained effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address on this item? Matters back before the body, Councilmember O'Hara.
I'd like to move this item with a, go ahead. I have a couple of extra comments.
Let me just make sure. Have you made your motion, your complete motion?
Well, I would like to engage on the possibility of assigning myself and Gabriella and Renee as the ad hoc, but I don't, we don't have to do that at this point. Whatever.
No, you make whatever motion you would like to make.
Okay.
And then we'll see if there's a second, so make your motion.
Okay, so I will move the recommendation in the agenda report with the amendment to assign myself, Councilmember Trigaro, and Councilmember Golda as the ad hoc committee members. Honestly, we haven't talked about this, so if that's something that is...
No, no.
Yep, go ahead.
Are you finished with your motion?
Yes, I am.
There's a motion, and there's a second by Councilmember Golda. Councilmember O'Hara, you may proceed on your motion.
Thank you for the opportunity. One thing that I just want to close on is that I think the main thing that we're trying to achieve with this is kind of catalyzing this conversation citywide. I do think that human nature kind of defines our path forward in a lot of these situations where we really only react out of fear and we sometimes are complacent until we are faced with an emergency. I think having a comprehensive process that really engages the Firewise groups, we have heard, at least I have heard over the last couple of weeks, that there are a lot of interesting ideas that our community members want to bring forward. I think having a councilmember ad hoc committee that's receiving those, working with our partners to develop a comprehensive approach, which is really layered with all of the other things that are happening regionally, is going to be very important. One thing that I think we haven't talked about is there really is a significant problem around homeowners and renters insurance and affordability around that. That is something in addition that we, I think, could play a role in, in lobbying the state as well and trying to come to some resolution around that. So very happy to have the partnership of the council members with me here, and that would be the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion or debate, seen and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and is ordered. We're on our turn. This is parking lease revenue bond authorization. This is brought to us by the Department of Finance. Ms. Cavill?
Back again.
Welcome again.
No, no presentation, really just a brief comment. This is necessary for us to bring to you the bonds that we are going after for the parking garage. We plan to bring that in the next couple of months. So staff is here as well as our municipal advisor and bond counsel if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions or comments by council members on this item. Seen and hearing none, let me see if there are questions or comments by members of the public, either with us in chambers or online. Ms. Bush, anyone online?
Yes.
We'll take the person online. Good afternoon, and person online, and welcome to the council meeting.
Yes, hello, thank you. This is Garrett. Hey, ordinance 1226 granting the authority to incur near limitless public debt on the whim of a council resolution was one such damage done to the muni code during the progressive majority reign of terror in 2019, and was laughingly to be justified as a matter of not being an inconvenience having to examine whenever public oversight separate ordinances provide. It self-proclaimed that the city charter authorized the city to basically do whatever it wants using the loosest of interpretations of, quote, "make and enforce all ordinances and regulations in respect to municipal affairs," apparently also laughingly including not having to bother with issuing any other ordinances but only resolutions. I don't know if case law has tested such nonsense in court, meaning here that the city has unchecked power to incur debt onto the public in any amount for virtually any reason or none, as long as it calls it a municipal affair. Gee, silly me. I thought through public democratically approved bond interest and taxes, all municipal affairs are properly included with all appropriate necessary public oversight. Well, not really. Unfortunately, the city charter may claim all authority not claimed by the feds or the state unless the public removes that authority. Anyway, there are, though, huge differences between a bond issued to ensure sustainability of the muni water system or one used to finance a parking structure such as the new library, although they do both have one thing in common. At the stroke of a pen and an IIII vote, vast millions of dollars of debt plus interest are incurred by the public without an approving vote or even over the large and vocal objections of the people, unlike the more ethically and correct and democratically approved bonds such as school bonds, et cetera, where debt creation is the people's choices, it should be. Clearly, more legal statutory restraints on the government are needed, à la Prop 13 and all the others regarding debt and obligations. But there we are. Anyway, while the very real prospect of a multi-year drought occurring sometime in our lifetimes is potentially a catastrophic event, the downtown library project isn't anything like that and never really had the expressed approval of the people and a considerable amount of truly widespread controversial objection. Part of the envisioned parking structure isn't even for the public, but for use by, exclusive use by private subsidized price control tenants, which is truly questionable as to if that is a municipal affair. While the city has accumulated a lot of money towards this project years in the making, but now in the 11th-plus hour, you failed to find the funding, you came up short, and you decided putting the public into course of debt is your only solution. Duh, normally the approval of debt or the acquisition of necessary monies comes first, then the obligations to spend occur, you know, but like the original measure S, but not in this town. Anyway, you've been overspending unauthorized money on another authorized by the people project all along, even knowing and in spite of, in spite of wide opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philip. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush?
No.
Matters back before the body, is there a motion? Councilmember Newsom is recognized.
I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Councilmember Newsom makes a motion, and Councilmember Trigaro seconds. Mr. Newsom, you may open on your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. So my comments will be very brief. Downtown library project is moving forward. This bond's in reference to the parking structure that's associated with that project. And, you know, just look forward to this project coming to fruition and buying 120 units of affordable housing and a new childcare center in downtown and a state-of-the-art library. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Ms. Cavill, if I could. Based on the gentleman's call a minute ago, let me see if I understand the difference between a general obligation bond and a revenue bond. The reason that a general obligation bond requires a vote of the people is because it obligates the city generally. It's just what it says. And that then affects directly our general fund. And if I understand it correctly, the difference between that and a revenue bond is that the revenue bond has a dedicated revenue source that is not tied to the general fund, and that bond is contained within. The obligation to repay that is contained within that designated revenue source. Is that correct?
Which is the parking.
And that is why we can do this this way, because we are allocating funds that are within our discretion to appropriate, and we can appropriate that for the purpose of retiring these bonds, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and is ordered. Item 21 is continued until February 25th. We're on item 22. This is an amendment to the county code relative, excuse me, to the city code relative to noise. And this item is being brought to us by councilmembers Brunner and Newsom. Which of you would like to open on the item? Councilmember Brunner, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor. And we also have our city attorney's office, Cassie Bronson, here on the legal, for any further questions on the legal side of this objective standard to our noise ordinance, chapter 9.36 and chapter 9.40. So this has been a culmination of probably about a year and a half or more, certainly since you have been elected. We have received multiple correspondence and we have a lot of, a lot of people who have just had their well-being impacted in our shared public spaces, in our commercial areas, where some of the other noise ordinance chapters aren't in place. And what that means is we have different noise ordinances, and I'll have Cassie Bronson speak to that, whether it's a special permit or a public gathering and expression. There are different chapters in our sound and amplification and equipment and what's called our noise ordinance. There's not a blanket one noise ordinance. And so what we're trying to address here is when it occurs on public property in shared public space. And we received a lot of requests for various mitigation measures, including no amplification, including decibel readings and levels, all of which we had to do our due diligence and research and really understand what those implications and what that would, what those outcomes would be. And we really looked to some federal case laws and other jurisdictions that have various ordinances in place, and we wanted to really make sure we created objective standards and not squashing any expression that makes, you know, for our vibrant city. And I think we've arrived at that, and really it centers around similarities to the California State Vehicle Code, which their objective standard is if it's a moving vehicle, unreasonably loud noise is when it's heard 50 feet or more from a vehicle. In this case, we established if it's unreasonably loud, if it's heard more than 70 feet, 75 feet from the source, the stationary source on public property and shared public spaces in our commercial areas. We have a lot of impacts to offices and businesses. For example, our 988 call center is located downtown. We have medical offices and various impacts outside of what would be considered the normal ambient noise of a commercial area, a commercial downtown district or the west side district. There's understandably more ambient noise than a residential area. And so how do, how do we define what unreasonably loud is? And that was the intent here, is to set kind of a shared understanding, this objective. You know, if you see, there have been so many situations where, for example, a senior was walking down the street holding his hearing aid because the sound was so loud that it was, people were leaving the area. And so how do we define that? This is that attempt. I will hand it off to Councilmember... I will hand it off to councilmember Newsom and attorney Cassie Bronson for any further comments.
Thank you, councilmember Brunner. As my, as councilmember Brunner mentioned, this is, we, we have a, there is a noise ordinance for the city, but there seems to be not a clear understanding between community and city staff over what is unreasonably loud noise. This is just an effort to try to provide objective standards for that ordinance that will foster a environment of mutual respect while also promoting self-expression and free speech. And I'll turn it over to Ms.
Hi. Good afternoon. Mayor, vice mayor, council, Cassie Bronson, happy to be here today to speak with you about these proposed amendments to the municipal code related to noise. Councilmember Brunner mentioned how long we've been working on this. This is, you know, really super important to councilmember Brunner. And one reason why it took a while was because in the beginning, we were really focused on establishing certain decibel limits around town and which is, which makes sense as the way you might regulate noise in the city. And the challenge with that was that the SCPD had concerns related to practicality and ease of enforcement. Um, you know, would there have to be new training? Would there have to be new equipment? Um, and there were just concerns about, okay, are police officers going to be able to really measure decibels accurately, be trained on this, all use the same equipment in a way that would be upheld in court? So then when I, you know, I was able to review that one vehicle code section referenced by councilmember Brunner, that's vehicle code section 27007, that basically says, you know, if you have amplification that's emanating from a vehicle and it can be heard 50 feet from your vehicle, that's a citable offense. And so that was a model that our police department liked. That was very simple. They, they think it'll be very simple for them to enforce. Uh, they'll be, be able to measure distances through a couple of different means. But they'll, you know, if they're, if they know they're a certain number, uh, distance away from the speaker and they can still hear it, they're able to pick up that audible sound, especially on their body cam, they'll feel really good about being able to issue a citation against the person who's emanating the noise. And so just to kind of get into the nitty gritty, the amendments address two parts of the municipal code, section 9.36020 and section 9.40010. In both language, there's proposed language that specifies that if amplified noise or repetitive banging or percussive noises are emanating from public property and can be heard 75 feet or more from the source, then that is going to be considered presumptively unreasonable and unlawful under our municipal code. And I would just add, this was a reference, I think, by councilmember Brunner easily, but in the proposed amendment, the standard only applies to certain specifically defined commercial areas. The rationale behind this limitation has to do with case law surrounding the First Amendment. Generally, laws that regulate speech should be narrowly tailored to accomplish their legitimate government interest. And, you know, I think the sponsoring council members were interested in really making sure the law was as narrowly tailored as possible. Uh, and so by applying that restriction only to the defined commercial areas, the drafters were attempting to really tailor the restriction as contemplated by some of that case law. So those are all my comments for today and thanks so much.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Questions, comments? Councilmember O'Hara.
Uh, I wanted to start by thanking the council members for putting this forward. I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in support of providing some additional objective criteria around loud excessive noise. Because we've had a couple of weeks to think about this one, I, I spent a little time doing some additional research and notwithstanding the amount of time that was put into putting this together. I did want to share some of the things that came up in my research that I think are apropos to this discussion. First thing I wanted to kind of understand better were the California guidelines around this. Um, and there is California legislation that is, has really strong language around this that I wanted to share. So let this legislator of the state of California finds and declares that excessive noise is a serious hazard to the public health and welfare. Exposure to certain levels of noise can result in physiological, psychological and economic damage. There is a continuous and increasing bombardment of noise in the urban and suburban and rural areas. And essentially, government has not taken the necessary steps to mitigate this. Um, and then after many other levels of this legislation, they really implore local governments and local municipalities to take the responsibility kind of at a local level and create ordinances that mitigate this, you know, noise pollution that we experience day by day. So that was kind of the first round of investigation. The second round was to look at our own ordinance and general plan. Um, our general plan actually asks for us to consider noise mitigation across all land uses, not just commercial areas. Um, and while I fully understand that the areas that were identified in the, in this particular ordinance, the commercial zone, particularly downtown and in midtown, I, it raised questions for me about other commercial areas in our community, especially in other council members' districts. And in District 5, for instance, along River Streets in Harvey West, we have important commercial areas that I also think require additional objective criteria to ensure that public health standards are maintained. So with all of that research, I started to look at what other cities are doing as well. And I can't find another city that doesn't apply this kind of standard across all public spaces. In fact, there's, you know, basically all of the ones that I looked up that have similar characteristics, characteristic, characteristics to Santa Cruz apply this exact same standard for all public spaces. Um, so when we are done having this discussion, I'd love to hear from the rest of our colleagues and from the public. I am prepared to offer either a motion, but I assume a friendly amendment to add some additional language to the ordinance.
For the debate comment before we take public comment, the vice mayor is recognized.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I would like to thank my council colleagues for bringing this forward and appreciate the year and a half, two years long work that you put into it. Um, I, I had the same questions when I looked at this. I'm definitely in support of this. We've already received some communication in support of moving in this direction. I didn't think about all public spaces, but, but certainly other commercial spaces. Um, I know that, that the noises that we're talking about have impacted other commercial spaces that aren't outlined in this ordinance. One, and two, that by excluding those other commercial spaces or open spaces, we may be an unintended consequence of pushing, pushing them to these commercial spaces that aren't identified. So those were, I shared similar concerns as councilmember O'Hara, O'Hara. Um, and if we were to look at expanding to either all commercial spaces or open spaces, I think it would make it stronger. Otherwise, it does feel a little bit of a patchwork ordinance that could provide, that could lead to unintended consequences. Those are my thoughts for now.
For the questions and comments, councilmember Trigaro is recognized.
Thank you. I appreciate the attempt from my colleagues to, to create something and, and limit it to the commercial area, but we're already talking about expansion and that concerns me. I think I'm just generally concerned that this would lead to restricting community voices and creative expression, perhaps disproportionately affecting individuals who use music as artistic or political expression in public areas and public spaces, shared public spaces. And so I'll just close my comments by saying that I, I recognize the importance of public artistic expression in our city's cultural and political landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Before we go to public comment, seen here, none. This would be the opportunity for any member of the public to provide comments on this item. Ms. Bush, Mr. Ewing, please, please come forward. Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online with their hands up?
No.
Not at this time. Mr. Ewing, good afternoon again.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is still James Ewing Whitman. I think this is quite the loaded gun. I spent some time looking for the picture where, where I was reading. I could be wrong, but I couldn't find the picture in your information. An officer who whoever is giving the ticket doesn't actually have to address the individual. So I have to wonder when is artificial intelligence going to take over even more to be addressing this issue? I found myself on a walk last night and I walked into a bar. I was the only other person there besides the bartender at that time. And, you know, I brought up the subject that I was probably going to be speaking on the subject and she said, I got a ticket last Wednesday at 9:43 for, for this exact issue. And so I'm just wondering how this whole thing is going to go. And I really do appreciate Gabriella's comments about how is this going to be further expanded? And I can think of an individual, individual, his name is Curtis, that drives around, mostly really enjoy the music he plays. I mean, I find a lot of information and a lot of music to be quite offensive. Now, I myself did at least 16 film and video presentations. I haven't done that in about three and a half years, but I wonder how that's going to happen because if those tickets are like 200 bucks and stuff, I suppose it's just more of an opportunity to actually really follow through and start filing some lawsuits against this city. So I'm not really, I'm, I think that law enforcement already has enough beguiling issues to deal with. And, uh, you know, I admit there's some music that comes out of people's vehicles that I don't really care for, so I'm just mindful of my footprint with doing that. But as far as making a political statement and being able to do something, I mean, this room shut down basically for two years when the scandemic started. That's really disgraceful, you know? Just because individuals like me have a fair amount of commercial sound equipment and professional drivers, that would certainly offend anybody. You know, sometimes you can't even come within 50 feet of those drivers because it hurts your body. So, but so far, all that was mentioned was senior hearing aids. You know, there's, there's a blessing and a curse to all these technologies. If it really helps you hear, I mean, you can be quite sensitive, but to kind of make a joke, when are you going to start shutting down construction sites for people hammering nails? You know, because I know you can hear those sounds for miles. So I think this is just one more area of a technocratic control that may bounce back in your faces in positive ways mostly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Anyone online, Ms. Bush? Matters back before the body. Councilmember Brunner.
I'd like to move item number 22, ordinance amending Santa Cruz Municipal Code, Chapter 9.36, noise in Chapter 9.40, sound, amplifying equipment and adding objective standards to both chapters. And given some of the comments, I'd like to move forward with this proposed motion. I will hold it if there's a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brunner, you may open on your motion.
Thank you. I think there are some questions that have been brought up in, in terms of location and certainly, you know, valid curiosity. And I think I would like to just recommend that those questions can be further worked with the city attorney's office for future action. And I think today, this is a long time coming. I think the current subjective way that this is, is really difficult and we, this is in no way squashing any self-expression. In fact, we absolutely support and want to promote it. We made sure that was included in this language. This is simply, you know, addressing the city's, everybody's public health and the use and enjoyment of public space and in areas that have been impacted and that we've heard from. And I think this is a great start to, to that. Currently, the way it works is not working. And so I think if there's some additional questions and ideas, that can be worked through for any future action, as with all policy. We can always come back. We can review. We can, we can take that action then, but what, what has gone into this, this so far has been pretty amazing and we don't want to do anything that's unconstitutional. We want to uphold, you know, the community's input and, and needs, all everybody's, so everybody can enjoy our public spaces.
Further debate or discussion? Councilmember O'Hara.
I, I thank you, councilmember. I appreciate that, that sentiment. I would like to offer a friendly amendment for consideration and if it is not under consideration, a substitute motion. I'd be happy to go through the amended ordinance, which I worked with the city attorney's office as well. So at the pleasure of the mayor or the maker in the second, I'm happy to offer that.
Let us see or hear whatever your motion may be. Thank you. And we will start this out or give you the opportunity to explain your motion and then a determination will may be made by the maker in the second about what form this will
Ms. Bush, are you able to put up on the screen?
Yeah, I got it.
So as you're looking through the amendment here, what you see in red are the additions that I included under consideration as a friendly amendment. And I actually think they get to a large portion of what we discussed today. So the first whereas that is added is simply adding some language from the California legislation that provides the basis for this particular ordinance, which I think is very helpful because it really grounds the discussion in public health and public health issues. The second whereas does orient us to our own general plan. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the conversation, provides direction to ensure that we are maintaining and reducing existing noise levels and controlling excessive noise for all residents across all land designations. The third edit here is just clerical, making sure that we take out the city of Santa Cruz week because we have that in the first whereas, and then striking in commercial areas. And you'll have more information on that as we get to the second page. So again, in section one at the bottom, striking in commercial areas. The top of page two, one thing that I did not mention at the beginning of my comments is that in addition to noting that other cities have this type of objective ordinance and criteria across all public spaces, most all of them talk about their intention around preserving constitutional rights. So what you'll see here is adding the promote public health, safety and the welfare of citizen, citizenry and to foster an environment of mutual respect while this, at the same time recognizing certain protections by the constitutional rights of freedom of speech and assembly and promoting self-expression. So that really is intended to enhance that particular intent amongst the city. If you get to the third page, what we're doing here in section C, if the noise producing source is, and then striking in a commercial zone as defined below and adding on a public street, sidewalk, alley, right of way, park, or any other public property and keeping the rest of the updated language the same as the city attorney's recommendation. And then doing the same in the section in chapter 9.40. So striking as defined in the commercial areas and adding clarity around the public spaces that we are talking about. And that's the extent of the changes. I did have an opportunity to work with the city attorney's office on, on this over the last few weeks and then did have a, a meeting with Cassie and kind of went through these and she provided some recommendations for edits, which of, of course I included. And so she provided some recommendations for edits, which of course I included, and so was happy to receive that feedback. So that would be my recommendation as a friendly amendment.
Very good. Let me ask if the maker of the motion would receive this as a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay. Then do you wish to make a substitute motion?
Yeah, then I'll make a substitute motion.
There's a substitute motion as presented by Councilmember O'Hara in the document that she distributed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second under discussion. Ms. O'Hara, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I do recognize the challenge of the expansion from the narrow designation of our downtown, midtown, and mission. I think as we know and experience in this role at the city, that designation, when we are reacting, whether it be law enforcement or code enforcement, to particular things that we regulate, we always have to be thinking about people's constitutional rights and protecting folks in free speech and other constitutional rights. It's, in my opinion, a possibility to try to have regulation of certain types of behaviors, this noise being one of them, and not have that be part and parcel to how we enforce. And I think our city staff, whether it be the police department, code enforcement, and planning, take that responsibility very seriously. In conversations with Cassie, I think that in looking at other cities and how they are applying this in all public spaces, from my perspective, what we see with precedent with other cities is that it really does fall on the enforcement and not necessarily the language that's written in the code. So we'll have to be very thoughtful, and I'm sure we will. That's something that we do every day in the city, and it's a value that we hold very, very high, and it's a critical piece of our principles. So I don't have anything else to add. I don't know of a second or.
Thank you. Further debate or discussion? Councilmember Golda.
I just have a question, and it's mostly to the city attorney. Would there be a problem with, or can you tell me, explain to me what the difference would be in any problems you see as opposed to how it was proposed?
Thanks for that question. There are a number of cases that tell us what an unconstitutional noise ordinance looks like. We don't have really super clear guidance about specific situations. Is this actually constitutional? So I will say that the draft that was initially proposed is more narrowly tailored than the one that has been proposed by Councilmember O'Hara. With that said, I cannot say that Councilmember O'Hara's proposal is unreasonable or unconstitutional. It allows 75 feet of amplification without any permit. And the city has a pretty easy permit process for public gathering and expression events and for other types of noise activities, noise generating events. So I would say that the first one that was proposed is more narrowly tailored. And so in that way, there would be additional arguments to support its constitutionality.
Further debate or discussion? Councilmember Golda.
Do you anticipate, do you, how do you see this being enforced? Complaint or people actively? Would people, would officers be actively patrolling for this or would it be complaint-driven? I guess.
Currently, I think predominantly complaint-driven. Oftentimes, someone's piece is disturbed, and there may be a call in. I see our police chief here, but I think from what I know, and there might be other data, it's complaint-driven. And we've received as council members many of those complaints in certain areas. And so when that happens, you have to be a victim, and you have to actively sign a citation in your name. And oftentimes, people don't want to be in that position, or they have to wait a long time around for an officer, not a long time, but they have to wait for someone to respond. And so there are some challenges. I don't think in any scenario there are officers actively going out. I've never, I haven't seen that happen, but I think it is currently subjective. And this, what might be unreasonably loud to you is not to me, for example. And this just kind of creates that definition in these high-impact areas.
Chief, good afternoon. Welcome. Looks as if you might have an opinion on this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. I would agree with Councilmember Brunner's point. I think that the resources, we just don't have the resources to be driving around and measuring out 75 feet. So it would be complaint-based, for sure. And yeah, I think that answers the question.
Thank you, sir. Further debate or discussion? And then, pardon me? Okay. Anyone with us wish to make, I'm sorry, we have a motion, a second on the floor.
Substitute.
On the substitute motion, let me just say on the substitute motion, let me go to the larger question of the motion, the actual subject matter here itself. I'm pretty reluctant to get the sound police involved in our community in the following regard. Some of the noises are sounds of work. Some of the noises are sounds of fun. Some of the noises are sounds of families enjoying their backyard and having other people over there. Some noises are unreasonably loud, I imagine that's the case. I like the sounds of work, the sounds of fun, the sounds of families. And if they happen to have a mariachi band and they turn up the music, it sounds good to me. I'm pretty reluctant to support this kind of what seems to me to be a form of censorship. I'm much more interested in the narrowcast version of this and see how it goes than I am the more broadcast nature of this. All that's been talked about here is, gee, there's noisy things that go on. Well, I know that. I live in a neighborhood. There's noisy things that go on. That's part of living with human beings. So in any event, we'll call the roll on the substitute motion.
So to be clear, the vote is to decide whether to accept the substitute motion. If the vote passes, then the council can vote on the substitute motion.
Forget it, sorry. Councilmember Trigaro?
No.
Brunner?
No.
Newsom?
No.
Golda?
Yes. Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
No.
The result of that, Madam Clerk?
If the motion fails, now we will vote on the.
We are now on the underlying motion. Is there further motions to amend or substitute motions? Seeing and hearing none, we will vote. Clerk will call the roll on the underlying motion.
Councilmember Trigaro?
No.
Brunner?
Aye on the original motion.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. Mr. Candati, do we have further business come before us?
We have none.
Madam Clerk, further business come before us.
None, for me, no.
And on that note, Councilmember Golda, again, with deep reluctance and skepticism, moves to adjourn. And Councilmember Trigaro feels similarly, but she seconds the motion. It is not debatable. Those in favor signify by saying aye opposed. Motion carries so ordered. We stand adjourned.
Aye.
You adjourn before the act.
There we go.